It's a call to order to the Wyoming City Council Meeting of Monday, November 17, 2025. Our first item of business will be the invocation given tonight by Pastor Barry Petrucci from Wyoming Park United Methodist Church. If you wish and are able, please stand for the invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance will follow.
It's been an attitude of prayer. Ever creative, ever-abiding God, the mission seems so simple: community, safety, stewardship. And yet, the world and our city are anything but simple. The great faiths of the world understand humankind to be stewards of the earth and of all within it. We're called to be managers on behalf of divine creativity. We confess that while we have moments of doing our best, we largely struggle with really caring for the earth, for her communities, for all the individual humans and all the creatures within it just trying to survive. In our own community, we're thinking of those who are without adequate housing, without adequate food or health care. We're grateful. We're grateful and indebted to our civil servants here who keep us in a safe place. As negotiations ramp up with our siblings in the police department, may they know that we are indebted to them, and may our thanks be tangible. We pray for fair balloting. We pray that bridges of justice might replace walls and spaces of eminent domain. We pray for our civil workers, for our employees of all kinds, for our contract workers. And we pray for this city council and the professional management team that makes Wyoming a great city, that along with all of us, continues to be a work in progress. Even as you're with the leaders, celebrate with us those that are recognized, honored, and divine spirit work with those who come with concerns and ideas, with frustrations and with gratitude, that we might together see that we are part of one community, and that we might act kindly and in constantly supportive ways, doing justice, loving kindness, and walking always in humility. All of this, we pray in the name of the God we know by many names. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Here.
Brathauer.
Present.
DeCraeger.
Here.
Hill.
Present.
Postema.
Here.
Posler.
Here.
Mayor. Here. So approval of minutes. You have received the November 3, 2025, regular meeting minutes, and the November 10, 2025, work session minutes. And if there's no objections or changes, those are stand-approved as written. Seeing none, those minutes are approved. Approval of agenda. Can I get a motion, please? Motion by Postema, support by Brathauer. Any changes, Mr. Shea?
Nope.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Postema.
Yes.
Brathauer.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
DeCraeger.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Posler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Public comment on agenda items. This public comment period is reserved for comment on agenda items only. If you wish to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, please hold your comments until the acknowledgement of visitors section at the end of the meeting. It's important to note that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate. This is an opportunity to provide comment to the city council. Upon approaching the podium, please begin by providing your name and address. There's a three-minute limit per person. Anyone tonight like to speak to an agenda item? Okay. Seeing none. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight. We have no petitions or communications tonight. We have no reports of city offers tonight. We have no budget amendments, no consent agenda, and no resolutions. Let's go to award of bids, contracts, purchases, and renewal of bids and contracts. A, please.
Resolution A is to accept a quote for the purchase and installation of a DSX access control system for the Wyoming Senior Center.
Motion, please. Motion by Arnoyes and support by DeCraeger. Mr. Shea.
This is to provide card access, expand the card access system at the senior center, I think, for about 14 different doors. And so use a card to gain access versus a physical key. And we received two bids, and we're recommending the lowest bid from EPS.
Questions for Mr. Shea here? We've got our Parks Department here that run the senior center, so they could help also, but I'm sure this is much needed. If there's no questions, call the roll.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Yes.
DeCraeger.
Yes.
Brathauer.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Postema.
Yes.
Posler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Take B, please.
Resolution B is to accept a proposal for professional services for the Lamar Park stage development.
Motion, please. Motion by Postema, support by Brathauer.
Mr. Shea. So as some of you may know, the portable stage or temporary stage that we have is in very poor condition.
How old is it, by the way? Do we know?
I think it's over 20 years old, I believe.
25 years?
Yeah. So we're looking at actually constructing a permanent stage at Lamar Park where we have the concerts in the park and other events. The proposal here would be to do the design work for that and construction engineering. It's not for the actual repair or actual construction. And they were looking at putting on a stage, I think it'd be about 40 foot by 24 foot. It would have sound, an integrated sound system, acoustical systems, a couple restrooms for the performers and so forth, and it could accommodate a pretty large audience that we receive at Lamar Park. And so this would be to do the design and construction engineering work, and then depending on what cost estimates we get for that, we can then budget, I think, in '27 or maybe '28 for the actual construction.
Okay. So the construction of the stage would be in our capital improvement budget for 2027?
Seven or '28, yeah. We're still putting.
Where would the, for the benefit of the audience tonight, will it be constructed where we normally host the stage now?
Yeah.
Same basic area there.
Okay. Questions for Krishan or for John? Rob?
Chair, how many events are held with that stage on an annual basis, would you say?
Krishan, would you know that?
At this point, maybe three or four outside of the concert series.
Yeah. Come on up so we can get recorded on the tape, on the video.
So it used to be a lot more. We used to go out and rent the stage to other communities to use for some of their events. We scaled that back probably five years ago at this point, and we're only using it locally in Wyoming. At this point now, it's only used really for the concert series, for the Memorial Day celebration, and Metro Cruise, I think, was the last time it was used. It wasn't used this past year, but only for those events has it been used recently. So would we be using that, because I know with Memorial Day, we're at a different location, so would we be moving all those events then to Lamar Park if that's going to be there? No. So part of the design at Veterans Memorial Garden includes a sort of raised platform area that would still be used for Memorial Day ceremonies and would eliminate the need for the stage to be used there. And then Lamar Park would just be the primary location for larger-scale concert-style events. It also would be available for community members to be able to rent the stage to use for different uses as well.
And Metro Cruise would figure out another way to do theirs?
Yeah. They actually didn't use, I misspoke, they didn't use it this past summer. I think that they rented somewhere externally for this past summer. So last year was the last time they used it.
I know they had a band on the opening day, but I didn't think it was our stage. More questions?
What would it cost? I'm sorry, can I?
Yep.
What would it cost for the, if we would get a replacement for the portable stage? Just, and do we have an idea? I know we have to get design work, but all-in what the cost would be for the permanent, including design and the permanent stage? We won't know that until we have the design portion. They're guessing that it likely would be something that's at least around $500,000 for construction, depending on what level of each of these different elements that we put into the design.
Ms. Hill.
Yeah. Mayor Vanderwood, I'm totally, I think we should just buy a really nice portable stage just so we can use it at other events. I think we've been spending enough money at the taxpayers' expense, and I think that's just going to be another burden. And I love the concert series, but I think portable stages would work good, and then we can do our council on the road too, and we can use that portable stage for that too. So that's my thinking.
Okay. Others?
I'm assuming we must have considered the pros and cons of both. I guess, is there any rationale for specifically why we didn't want to go that route?
Yeah. So there's a significant amount of staff resource time that goes towards moving the stage around and taking it to different places to be rented that really isn't being covered by just a rental price. It's, unless you are the owner of your stage and you're using it for your own purpose, there's really not a lot of revenue attraction towards sending it out to another event and having them rent it when you add in all of the staff time and cost to set it up and be there for your event, and then tear it down and get it back where it needs to go. A lot of communities are also moving away from that, so most communities around us are constructing permanent stage type of facilities instead of these rented things that you see around. Grand Rapids, I think, still has a couple of the rented temporary stage types, but they, I think at this point, are kind of the only name in the game that has that. Kettwood is creating something that's more permanent as a part of their construction that they have going on, and it's just a model that you don't really see as much happening anymore. They're very hard to maintain, they're expensive, and they're expensive to repair and upkeep as well.
So one thing, something else? One thing we need to keep in mind is if we do allocate these expenses for the design phase, that's, of course, on one side, that's no guarantee that we're going to put it in the capital improvement plan later.
Right.
That will depend on next budgets for the next two years after this. But the other consideration to think about is if we do spend this money on professional services and then don't put it into our capital improvement plan, then we won't get that money back.
Right. And also, having just the design for the stage gives us opportunity to go for grants or other funding that could go towards the actual construction. If we don't have what we want designed, then it's difficult to say, hey, we'd like a grant to help do this thing. So we need, we kind of need the step one to be able to get any other external funding towards the construction also.
And you do feel like there's grants out there for this type of thing?
Yes. There's, I mean, there's a lot of different DNR grants in Parks and Rec. This would be a great opportunity for a passport grant.
Okay. For what? I'm sorry.
A passport grant.
Which we've received before.
Yes.
Mr. Arnoyes.
I love the forward-thinking that we're looking at. I guess my struggle yet is going in with the investment to get this all planned out. And is there a way that, because I've heard you say that there's several other communities that have permanent stages that are already designed, and maybe there's a design firm that already has at least an idea of what the cost would be before we get it designed, and then we could do a cost comparison to the two, and then we'd have a better idea of what we're looking at, and then we can look at it. So for example, you know, when I hear you say we have three events that we use it for, $500,000, again, just estimating, that's a pretty costly per-event expense. And I just want to, and then, but hearing you say that permanent versus a temporary, the labor, but just doing some type of an estimation about what's the pros and cons of both, or if there's a plan, a greater plan, that we'll be utilizing it more with more events and what that looks like and what that might materialize, I just struggle. I don't feel like I can support this expense right now without having a good perspective about the long term.
Would you also, would you also like, would you also want Krishan maybe perhaps then to bring back for comparison purposes some quotes on a replacement, like, have you do?
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I'm, just doing a side-by-side, permanent and a portable or temporary, and then, but all encompassing, at least at a high level, you know, this is what, these are the factors. So this one, you're going to have labor expense, this one, you're going to have it permanent, but then, you know, what does that look like from an overall investment on an ongoing basis? And what, if it's permanent, what does that mean as far as with ongoing maintenance? Just different things there. I just want to make sure that we're thinking through the business case of it.
Yeah.
In addition to the community benefit that it has.
Right. And to clarify, the three uses are just outside of the concert series? The concert series, I will say, this past year attracted almost 10,000 participants to Lamar Park for that sole purpose, so that continues to grow every year.
Who else?
What we can do is tell you, we'll come back and provide that information so council can kind of reevaluate this based on that additional information.
This be the example then of the postponement.
Yeah. I don't know if we need to.
We just had this training.
Yeah.
Well, we probably don't have to. We can just not vote, right? Greg?
Yeah.
Should we postpone it to a date certain in December?
Well, it's fine to come back later at a later date without a vote.
Okay.
The city manager will bring back the information.
Yeah.
You could take a handle of that.
So.
But we have a motion on the table.
We do.
Right.
So who made the motion?
Postema. Postema and Brathauer.
You guys willing to withdraw, or do you want to vote on it tonight?
Okay. We just learned about that. And I don't remember.
Don't remember.
But I'm willing to withdraw my motion and postpone it until either a date certain.
Don't use the word postpone. We have to set a date. We're just going to take it off the agenda.
I think our city attorney said we, that you simply don't have to vote and that the staff will look, provide additional information requested by the council and bring it back when we have that information.
So does the motion stay active? Or? Rescind your motion.
Your motion, so there's no vote. You can proceed as a manager, and Parks brings information, put it back on the agenda, then you can deal with it then.
Can we ask for 30 days or leave it wide open?
I would, at this point, leave it.
Leave it open.
Leave it open.
Okay. So is there consensus on that? Apparently there is. So we don't need to vote. Motion's off the table. Unless somebody wants to make another motion.
Yeah, Greg says you don't have to.
So should we make a motion to postpone?
You do not need to.
Okay.
No motion is on the table now as withdrawn. Looks like everybody consent, and the information will come back to you at a point when it's ready for, so we can give you the other information.
Rob would through it.
What? Rob would through it.
Right. And there was consensus among the council to agree with that.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on then. Thank you, Krishan. Let's move on to item C, please.
Resolution C is to accept a proposal for bridge engineering services.
Motion, please. Motion by Posler, support by DeCraeger.
So we use Scott Civil Engineering to do minor design work on our bridges and inspection work on our bridges, and so occasionally, from time to time, issues will come up with our bridges where we need some design engineering work, and we'd like to enter into a contract with Scott Civil Engineering, which this is their expertise, and again, the company we use. So similar to what we've done with other engineering firms, for small projects, we would use them not to exceed $50,000 per year like the other engineering costs, and then if we do have a large bridge project, we would seek a separate proposal and bring that back to council.
The beauty of this then is that we will not need to vote on several separate 3, 5, 7,000 dollar bids on.
Right. And if we do a major bridge project, we're going to get a separate proposal for that anyway and bring that back to council.
So it's a cap of 50,000 for engineering services?
Per year, yeah.
Questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Posler.
Yes.
DeCraeger.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brathauer.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Postema.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. We're going to lump the next five together, D, E, F, G, and H.
Resolution D is to accept a proposal for engineering services for pump and valve replacements. Resolution E is to accept a quote for aquatic informatic software. Resolution F is to accept a proposal for screen guide rail repair. Resolution G is to accept a quote for the site restoration and improvements to the South Lagoon Access Road. And resolution H is for the purchase of a refrigerant detector.
Motion, please. Motion by Arnoyes, support by Hill.
So these are all related really to the drinking water plant and a little bit to the wastewater plant, but the first one, one of our eight transfer pumps at the drinking water plant failed, and so council did vote to rehabilitate it. When we pulled it apart, this pump, which goes back to 1964, showed wear as though it was from 1964. So we're going to look at hiring Fishbeck to do the design work, Inspeks to replace that pump, as well as another pump that is of the same age as well. So that would be about $47,000 for that design work. Also looking to replace our data information computer software program at both plants that keeps track of our regulatory compliance data and our process control data software. And so that would be at both the wastewater plant and the drinking water plant. So we'd be going, that's a quote from aquatic informatic software, that is about $99,000. And then the screen guide rail repair, so there's a screen that goes over the end of the pipe, so as we bring in raw water from Lake Michigan, this intake screen is there to prevent debris like zebra mussels, fish, pieces of wood, and other stuff from coming in and damaging the pumps. And that screen got stuck and wedged where we couldn't move it up and down anymore, so we would have underwater construction corporation have, I think it's a pair of divers, go in and repair that. And then we did earlier, I thought it was earlier this year, clean out the lagoons at the drinking water plant from the bio solids, and there's an access road to get there. It's a dirt road that's in very poor shape, washes out a lot when it rains, and we would have a company come in and put some crushed asphalt on that for about $23,000. And then H is our refrigerant detector at the drinking water plant has failed, and to replace it is about $12,500.
Okay. Just a quick question on F there. Is that a, what we call a consent, that work hasn't been done yet, has it? You said it's, has it been repaired? Are we approving?
It has not been repaired yet. No, the work has not been done yet.
So it's still locked? It's still a problem?
Yes. There's actually two screens, so we're able to use the other one and isolate it.
I didn't hear what you said.
We have two screens. One is broken. We're able to use the other one. This is to fix the second screen, or one of two.
Okay. Questions on this side, or? Okay. Call the roll.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Brathauer.
Yes.
DeCraeger.
Yes.
Postema.
Yes.
Posler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Let's take letter I, please.
Resolution I is for a ward of bid of the wastewater treatment plant building B and V roof replacement, public safety tactical headsets and accessories, winter mix asphalt, and Water Works fittings.
Motion by Brathauer, support by Posler. What are these photos showing us?
So that's the roof to the two buildings at the wastewater treatment plant that would be replaced. For those two buildings, it's about $157,000 for that. And then our tack team at the police department would be replacing all of their headsets. It'd be 17 sets of headsets for that. And then the winter mix asphalt is we use both cold mix and hot mix to do pavement repairs, patches, and so forth. So we have a proposal for that this winter, like we do every year. And then Water Works fittings are just various fittings we use to repair broken water mains, and just to purchase those parts on an as-needed basis.
Public Works and Aaron are asking for the most money tonight again, aren't they? Questions?
Can I have a question about the skylights on the roof? What is the purpose of the skylights? Seems like a big expense.
Go ahead. So those are just replacing the existing ones that are on there to provide ambient lighting inside.
Are there lots of leaks around those?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
That's how they were constructed, that's how the buildings were constructed originally.
Okay. What would be the cost comparison to do a roof with versus without skylights?
That I would not know.
We bid it out just, I believe we bid it out just to replace what was there. We didn't add any or subtract any.
Can you go back to that photo? Does it show them on there?
You can see that right there on the left. Left-hand side is one of the small ones there, yeah.
And again, what was, what did they provide, Aaron?
Just light, like ambient outdoor light on the inside, so you don't need as much electrical lighting.
Okay. Questions? Other questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Brathauer.
Yes.
Posler.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
DeCraeger.
Yes.
Hill.
No.
Postema.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. I was going to ask for clarification before that. A no vote would just be on that item, correct? It would be on all five?
The whole thing.
It's on all five?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Let's do I, please.
That was I.
It was I. Let's do ordinances. All right.
Ordinance 16-25 is a bond ordinance for financing the third water main transmission, or excuse me, the third water transmission main, and this ordinance would take immediate effect.
Motion, please. Motion by DeCraeger, support by Arnoyes. That's new language, immediate effect.
Yeah. So this is just for the, this is for the surge suppression system that you're aware of at the drinking water plant, and back in September, council issued a notice of intent to issue up to $11,500,000 in revenue bonds to pay for this. We're actually, this bond resolution would authorize up to $10 million, actually a little bit less than what we thought, for this project, and this is for our portion of the project. I believe Ottawa County is bonding separately for their portion of this project. And this surge suppression system is related to the third transmission main, and will protect that new main as well as our two existing mains from surges or what I'll call water hammers in the system to lessen the chance of leaks or damage to those mains.
Questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember DeCraeger.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brathauer.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Postema.
Yes.
Posler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Any information or materials tonight, Mr. Shea?
No.
Okay. Ignosment of visitors, this public comment period is an opportunity to share concerns or present topics to the city council that were not part of the meeting's agenda. This is not an opportunity for dialogue with council, but council may make referrals or request staff to follow up. Please provide your name and address when approaching the podium. There's a three-minute limit per person. Anyone tonight?
But on that note, just a big thanks to our wonderful team, the staff that we have here. We just, I'm just very thankful for all that they do, the many talents, and what they do for all of us in our city.
I'd just like to thank our staff and whoever was responsible for giving us our little seminar today. We learned some parliamentarian things, and we learned some legal things about how we do our meetings and the rules for such, and it was very informative, and it was, it was really good that we, as a council, got to get all together and do some training and make sure that we're doing our jobs as well as we can for our residents. And about a month ago, I was fortunate enough to go on a cruise, and I thought this was really interesting, because I was out in the middle of the ocean in the Caribbean, and we took a tour of the galley in the kitchen. And as we're touring through the galley, they had a whole bunch of stuff with the name Gordon on it. And I just thought that was so cool that our food service, based right here in Wyoming, Michigan, was seen by me, I'm the one, only one, obviously, that recognized it, but I was able to trace that back to my hometown 2,500 miles away, and just a shout-out to Gordon, and just, that was really cool for me to see.
Yeah, that was, that's good. Councilmember Hill?
Yes, yes, very, very thankful for Thanksgiving and all of our wonderful emergency providers and our police, fire, ambulance crew who are very, very busy in our city. I hear your sirens frequently. So, thankful for all of our citizens who come to our meetings and give their opinions, and we are, that's what we're here for as council members, to be heard by you, we represent you. And very thankful for our council and for everybody. We really do well together. I think we make an awesome team. We had a great training today, it was fantastic. And speaking of like, the parliamentary rules comes from a history from England and the Greeks, which was, no wonder why a lot of those wording sounds strange. So, that kind of, kind of made sense. And I just, we need to remember where our founding fathers, where they came from, and how they worked so hard into building our great constitutional republic on which we stand. And as I see our American flags get ripped down and being replaced by others across the country, it really concerns me. We have the greatest nation which ever lived, and I would like to keep our freedoms, our liberties, and for my grandkids and my great-grandkids. So, I think we need to get back to our history, and I've been reading a lot about our history and the founding of our country, and I've been reading about the forefathers monument with the top one being faith, and then it's bordered by four others on the bottom, and I'm researching that right now, so I'll talk to you, I'll tell you more about it next time. But I thought it was really interesting, and I wanted to share with you all. So, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Posler?
Excuse me, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving also. I'm thankful for everything city staff does as well. The training was very useful today, and I think it highlighted again how well everybody in the city works together, staff, city council, all of us. We don't always agree, but we handle ourselves with respect towards each other, and I think that's very important, and I'm thankful for that.
Councilmember Brethauer?
I just want to echo the thanks that everybody else is putting forward, too. Also thankful to see a couple new faces that are attending today, and I hope in December we have even more, and the roads are nice and clear, and everybody can make it safely.
Councilmember Posler?
Yeah, this was actually a couple weeks ago, but I forgot to mention it last week. I wanted to shout out, at the Michigan Association of Senior Centers, one of our very own residents won an award, Joel Anderson got volunteer of the year, like, throughout the whole state of Michigan. And if you're not familiar, he does like an insane amount of different kinds of volunteering, some of it that's just random, a lot of it that, he's a retired programmer, so he like comes up with all these little solutions for problems that we haven't even tried to solve yet, and he just puts a ton of time and energy in, and I know volunteers are hard to come by, so just wanted to shout out Joel.
Yeah, great, great, kudos to Joel, yeah. I served with him back on the Community Regional Commission years ago, so it's great. Thank you for our firefighters to come tonight, and yep, for being here, appreciate it. Couple things happening, December 5 and 6, this is exciting, both two free weekend events, we got a Wyoming Winter Wonderland and a Holiday Artisans Market, both at Godwin Mercato. So, on Friday will be the, I don't have a time on that, but that's in the evening, correct? Winter Wonderland, that's 6 to 9, 6 to 9, there we go, I'm sorry. Yep, 6 to 9. And it'll be at the Mercato with honors choir from Wyoming High School, jazz band, photos, Santa, Mrs. Claus, and Artisan Market. And then on Saturday will be the Wonderful Artisans Market from 9 to 2, so if you haven't been by the Mercato, this is your chance to check it out, because you can find more about that on our Facebook page. That's it. Be adjourned.